Alrighty, hello everyone, welcome to the subcommittee, Housing and Zoning Subcommittee of the Amherst Planning Board. It is Thursday, September 25th, it is 11:33 AM. We will start with just a roll call attendance. Just go around the Zoom room. Brad Hartwell is here. Angus MacLeod.
Present.
I, Jesse Major, am present. And Bruce Coltham is not present. Alright, let me just find the agenda. I think we're gonna hopefully talk about, oh, announcements? Anyone have announcements? I don't have anything. Nate, you have anything for us?
I do not.
Okay, anything from you two? Great. We're hoping to approve some minutes, or at least discuss some minutes. Angus and Fred, have you had time to look at them at all? Actually Angus, you weren't here, so Nate, that means you can't vote on them, right?
Yeah, I think they're good.
Okay. Is that, is that accurate, Nate?
It could, I mean, sometimes people abstain, or they, they don't, but I mean.
Because technically then, we had four. But now we're only two, if Angus cannot vote, so you tell us what to do.
I think if Fred thinks they're good, and you know, like I said, I think we can always post them and change them at, in the future, if people feel like there, you know, something's amiss, but.
So, and we should vote on approving them, or we should just?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so there were, I think we were talking about, for the first four sets that I sent around. Let me just find them, so I can reflect the dates appropriately. Okay, so we are talking about minutes from August 14th, July 23rd, May 14th, and April 23rd. And so, I will make a motion that we approve all four of those sets of minutes, as they are.
Second.
Great, thank you Angus. And was that a hand to make a comment, Fred?
Aye.
Okay, great, so let's go around and vote. Fred is an aye, Angus?
Aye.
Great, I am also an aye, so those four sets of minutes can be approved. And I'll send around another set for our next meeting. Excellent, thank you. Alright, next up, we had discussion, again, continuing discussion of North Amherst, and really to focus on preparing for a public meeting around this topic. So Nate, do you want to get us started?
Yeah, I think the, you know, the planning board, there's a better discussion of trying to work on the framework document, which we could do. I think some of it is, you know, discussing, you know, I think this would just be a big public meeting, public forum, anyone could attend, whether it's, you know, in North Amherst, right? I don't, you know, it's, it's a really odd thing to say, it's only for North Amherst residents, but I think we, you know, we can advertise it, you know, through the town's media in different, different ways. I just, I think the format of it will be important, how we frame it, and so, you know, Bruce had some ideas, he's not here. You know, not, you know, to me, this would be a more of a listening session. You know, taking the ideas down, I, you know, I guess, the question is if, if, you know, planning board members think it's worth having like a back and forth, sometimes to me that gets a little messy, and I, you know, I'd, especially for the first one, it might just be good to hear everything, we can have some maps. And take notes.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, you know, I guess that's some of it, someone would be like, okay, what do we think, like, you know, do we have an hour, probably? You know, what's a good format, do we have any like guiding questions to ask?
Yeah.
You know, the overlay, the framework is a few topics, right, like, kind of like, design, transportation impacts, or, you know, do we follow that in terms of comments, or do we just open up to everyone, I mean, I feel like, you know, that those, I mean, that's it, I mean, I almost feel like we, if we did, you know, if members gave like a five to 10 minute intro, which it doesn't have to be too long, and then, to me, it's kind of just opening it up for comments. I think Bruce wanted to have maybe a little bit more structure, I don't know, I feel like at this first juncture, it might be okay just to pass the microphone around, or have people just, you know, give everyone three minutes and see what they say, I don't, I don't know, I think it's, might be hard to categorize it by topic and be like, oh, let's only talk about transportation now, because, you know, so many comments can overlap, I don't, I don't know what people think, but.
Yep, I would, I agree with most of that, I was thinking, I mean, I definitely agree with making more of a listening and less of a back and forth. I was imagining, also maybe opening up the meeting with, as we've discussed already, the bigger picture planning. And maybe discuss some of that first, and maybe Nate, that's something you want to do, or I can, it doesn't matter who, really. And then, maybe take some comments about big thoughts, and then transition into, okay, now, now let's talk about this North Amherst idea. As a way to get, get to that. I was curious how, if we've done things like this before, how do materials get made available? Like, does this public meeting get a place on the website where we can put materials, or is it just at the meeting? That we can share?
Sure, yeah, I think we could, you know, post this online, get materials up there beforehand, you know, whether it's through like planning board or housing, you know, the housing and zoning subcommittee page, but I feel like there's a way to do that, and then, you know, we can make copies available at the, at the meeting itself, so.
And, and how do we advertise the meeting, is it just in?
Mister Chairman, I have to leave the meeting for about two minutes.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Okay, thanks Fred.
Yeah.
Do we need to, so we've lost quorum, so do we need to pause the meeting officially, or just not vote on anything?
Yes, I don't know, I'd say we can talk about this, we're not making any decisions. You know, I think we could advertise it, you know, what I would do is I'd post it as like a board meeting, too, so then, anyone who subscribes to get the calendar updates would, you know, we can use our communications manager and put it in the news item, ask for it to be published, you know, online and a few places, you know, Amherst Indy, the Gazette. I wouldn't necessarily do a formal legal ad, but, you know, even if it's, you know, if it's being held in North Amherst, you could even ask the counselors to help, I mean, I feel like there's, as long as there's enough lead time, I think there's no problem of getting people interested, it's just.
And I assume it's also totally fine for us to advertise, I mean, for us to communicate with whoever we want, that, oh, this is happening.
Yes, yeah, yeah, oh yeah, yeah, that's, that's never a problem, I just, I guess I don't know that we, that there's a date yet.
Right, I don't, I don't think so, I think Bruce was gonna talk to Kathy Shane, because they already had sort of a date for something planned.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So we can connect with Bruce, sorry Angus, your hands been up, do you want to add something?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, I mean, I was gonna say, what, what you just said, Jesse, and that you voiced, I think, in the, in the planning board meeting last week, that I, I think, having, starting with five to 10 minutes of planning board members kind of explaining the rationale for all of these areas, and then we've already done one, and now we're moving on to another, we'll be moving on to others, is kind of our strategy. I think that's great, I think that's essential. And then I think, I don't know, I don't know if we need to take questions then about the overall plan, but I think we can, I think then we could, we could shift into five, go into 10 minutes of explaining the North Amherst overlay specifically. And then, kind of remind people, I guess they're meaning like 40 minutes would be questions. And we could remind people that we're, you know, this isn't just about North Amherst, this is about the overall plan, but we are, you know, it's because this is the next stage, we're here in this community to hear specifically from you all as well, so we can kind of remind them that we can take thoughts on like the entire process. But to me, 40 minutes is a lot of, a lot of time for questions. And I, but I think that's the stage we're at, I think, you know, Bruce kind of had a vision at one point of, of sort of a back and forth, putting maps up on the walls, having people move around, I love that idea, maybe at a later date. I think to me, that's, once we've heard some of these overall thoughts, we revisit that kind of overlay as we're imagining it. Then, once we are ready to kind of, once we've taken that all into consideration, then we could do another meeting if we wanted to, where we maybe do a bit more of interactions with, with the public around our proposal, as opposed to just kind of getting feedback.
Yeah, I think that all makes a lot of sense. Do we, I guess, we don't know where it would be up, so we can think about materials we actually want to have available, I mean, I, I do think we'd want to, if we follow the sort of layout you just described Angus, we probably first want either a projection or a big whole town map, right? I can imagine with the areas highlighted, including University Drive overlay, so that we can point to them, and like you said, describe some briefly, the big picture, and then maybe that changes to the, just the zoom in on North Amherst. At least just the bold outline, you know, area. So that then we could talk through them, and yeah, maybe we want to have, I can imagine, you know, Nate, either you or I doing the big picture one description, and then maybe Bruce wants to take on the North Amherst specifics. And, and yeah, I think we can make the framework available, that document, but I don't think we need to go through all the, try and go through each point. Right, just more of a general description. And, and leaving the possibilities pretty wide, like, we haven't decided on heights, or we haven't decided on specific uses, that's all what we're discussing, and that's why we're coming to get input, right? Does, does Nate, do you, the staff have resources to put those things together, if it needs to be like a big poster board, or?
Yep, yeah.
Is there a town projector we can borrow, if it's in a room that doesn't have AV, like, how does that work, I just don't know.
Yeah, no, I think we, as long as we have, I think we do, we do, I just, I'd have to work with IT to get it set up. Yeah, I mean, I'm taking notes, my thought would be, we'd have, you know, like an agenda, I think even at a presentation, like, no more than 10 slides, which could be projected or printed, whatever. Larger maps printed out, and then we could have even like questions, leading questions or framework questions. You know, my thought with the presentation and this stuff is just to put it online, right, so if we, you know, right, we could just have like a few slides describing, like we're just saying, the townwide piece. You know, loop in, like, the, some things from the housing production plan, then we have the North Amherst piece, then we have questions and comments, and even if we just kind of set that, you know, have that outlined and ahead of time, it just will help with, to me, I think if people see that, what their expectations are for the meeting.
Okay, I just noticed there is a participant, there's a call-in listener, just so you're aware, the number is 413-336-2500. I don't know, know if that's Bruce, that's not the number I have for him. Nate, do you remember how someone on the phone raises their hand?
It's, I think, I always say like star nine, but I forget exactly.
I was gonna ask them to, if it is Bruce, to raise his hand, if we can bring him over. Oh, and Janet McCallum just joined as well. So I'm happy to bring them over, as we have been doing in the past, oh, the caller just left, okay, I guess they didn't like we called them out. So I do see Janet, and unless there's objection, I will bring Janet over in case she wants to add comments. Just that, that's what we've been running the meeting, any issues from the other members? Great, Jenna, I'm gonna elevate you to a panelist, and I'll explain more when you get here. Hi Janet. Fine, if you just want to listen in, we've been running this meeting as just a conversation, so we've been bringing in all the attendees, so you can participate, please use the hand raise function, just like normal. You're currently muted, I don't know if you've met Angus. There's your introduction, I think you know Fred and myself. Angus, Janet was on the planning board for I don't know how long, before I was there, I can't, you're muted.
So I was on the planning board for five years, and I was the caller, so I just hung up. I was, I was in Hadley shopping for cat.
Gotcha, totally fine if you'd rather just.
I, I'm definitely listening today, thank you.
Okay, sure. Alright, so we were, we were talking about materials for the presentation, it sounds like we'll get that in shape. Nate, it sounds like you'll take the lead on that, so obviously, if we're gonna put slides together, we probably want to include in the introduction some of the just numbers that we've put together in various places, meaning the residents, students, over, students looking for housing, you know, just to give some rough big picture idea of what the problem is we're working on, right? All throughout, I would have us reemphasize really the main purpose, which is to encourage and increase the number of long-term residents in neighborhoods. That still remains the problem we're trying to solve in my mind. And the prevention of more family and professional level housing being turned into student rentals, because they don't come back. So as much as we can weave that narrative in, I think is helpful. Oh, there's Bruce. It is 11:48, and Bruce Coltham is joining. Hi Bruce.
I'm sorry, I was snoozing, and I.
Good for you. Just to catch you up, we were mostly discussing how we imagined this first public meeting could go.
Yep.
And what we had sort of agreed the four of us was imagining a five-ish minute introduction on the big picture, not just North Amherst, like, all the different areas we're thinking about, starting with University Drive, explaining the problem we're trying to solve, and then transitioning to more specifics about North Amherst. But not getting into the super nitty gritty, not going through each point, sort of on the framework. And really, taking total of 15, 20 minutes for us to present ideas, and then just listen to what people want to talk about, rather than back and forth, trying to respond and make everyone happy.
I have something like exactly the same thing and the same agenda for a conversation, a long overdue conversation on the North Amherst community farm, in the same venue, this Sunday, so I.
Right. You could, you can preview for us how it'll go. Do we have a, was there an actual date for this, Bruce, did you talk with Kathy?
No, I told, Kathy called me. Actually, she called me about the matters related to the school building, elementary school building committee, and a an issue related to the playground surfacing, which is kind of serious and, and needs actions and thought and so forth. And then she segued from that to this, and I said she should talk to Doug and Nate, I thought this was not something that I was going to be able to be useful, I mean, in terms of scheduling and all that, I just said, talk to the chair and, and to the staff person in charge. So presumably she's done that, but I don't know.
Okay, so we'll, we'll wait, maybe, maybe Nate, is appropriate for you to reach out to her to ask about getting a date on the books, just so we can start planning? Or do you want me to do that, either way?
I can say that she was thinking about the, the, the first Sunday, was it, it would be October the 12th, I guess, is a Sunday, because that's the day after we're doing it, so it'd be October 5th, or the one after.
That's a holiday weekend, might not be the best plan.
Well, yes, I don't know what, so anyway, I said probably it would be better to do it after our next board meeting. I, I said I, I would assume that the chair would probably have an opinion like that, but I
Sure.
Didn't say much else.
Okay. Sorry Nate, you were gonna say, you want to reach out?
Yeah, I'll email Doug, and I can email Kathy, and just see, I mean, I, you know, you know, I will say weekends are tough for me, just because of family commitments. And I guess we can have a few dates in mind, I think maybe then on October 8th, if we had some ideas, we could discuss that with the planning board about availability, whether it's, you know, kind of early evening during the week, or some other time, I mean.
I would, I would think that would be better also, like, evening during the week, but.
Yeah, typically, I mean, I think that Kathy's thinking of this in, 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 in a, in the way she's thought about the various meetings that she, as a counselor, has had, and it's always been Sunday afternoons that she thinks apparently that that's the time she can get most people engaged. But, talk to her. And Nate, it may, it may not be, well, I suppose it's, it's probably advisable to have you there. But it does seem unreasonable to expect you to show up things like this on a weekend.
Yeah, that's, well, what we had briefly out, Bruce, is that perhaps either Nate or I, or a combination, does the big picture sort of introduction, and then you could take over and do the more North Amherst specific.
Maybe, or, or I could simply facilitate the conversation. Or Kathy could.
You'll know people's names to call on them, right?
Yes, I mean, that's the kind of thing where it should be somebody who's familiar with the neighborhood, and that's why, and I'm quite used to facilitating complex community discussions of one sort or another. I've been doing it most of my life.
Okay. Okay, so any more discussion about the meeting we should have right now? Sounds like really we just need to, seems like we're in pretty clear agreement on how we like it to go. We just need to get a date, and then we'll get a little more serious planning on that. Alright. Let's see. Next up, we were gonna shift gears and talk about the zoning priority list. So I'll be honest, I haven't really thought about it since planning board. Maybe we just want to look at the list together and try and slide them around, and agree on some priorities, Nate, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I think there's, you know, I have 14 on the list after the planning board meeting, you know, we could add to it, I think. You know, I was gonna talk about, you know, at the planning board meeting, when we were looking at areas in town, I, I was hoping to get a map together, but, you know, there's, you know, like a dozen areas identified, and so I think it's maybe 13, some are overlapping, but some of it would be, you know, some of these zoning ideas could be used in those areas, and some could be different, and I, you know, I guess some, you know, the discussion is, do we, do you like the idea of looking at a specific zoning topic that could be applied townwide, or do we want to focus on a specific area and see what strategies might work in that area? And, you know, and it might end up being that the approach is, well, then it's a zoning change that affects townwide, depending on the district or something, but those are kind of my ideas, and I can share my screen, if there's other ideas too, I feel like you know, the list, to me, it's, I think, you know, we have had these lists in the past, and I'd like, I was gonna do a little bit more research and pull some older ones out, even going back like 10 years, and just you know, trying to consolidate, consolidate them, I mean, for instance, you know, the town, we know in our zoning bylaw, we have regulations for cannabis, and they're a little outdated, just given what's, you know, changed in the, with the state the last so many years, and so I, I know some staff have been looking at that, I don't, you know, we can add it to the list, but it's not something I'd have the, this committee necessarily work on, I think some staff are gonna take the lead on that, but you know, it's something that could be coming forward, you know. Does it affect the planning board, I mean, I guess, you know, at some point, you know, where we allow the uses might, if there's ideas about that.
I was, I would say, don't look back too far, because then you realize the same things have been discussed and not acted on forever.
Could be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I was just gonna say, I, I wonder if, before looking at the list, talking about maybe workflow might be a worthwhile thing, and by that I just mean, which things we might want, if we might want to separate the work to stuff that the staff can work on on their own, I'm thinking like the sign by law. I don't think any, anyone on this panel, well, I don't know, I shouldn't, I shouldn't speak for you all, but I certainly don't have any, any particular expertise about signs and consti- and constitutional law around signs, so that seems to me like something that we could ask the planning department to work on, and then propose to us a change. And then other things that it seems more like we would need to work on as a committee, as a subcommittee, to bring, maybe to the planning department, talk about it, bring it to the overall planning board, and then things that we're maybe working on more closely in relation to each other, going back and forth. I don't know if that, if that makes sense as a, as a workflow, but I, I thought it might be worthwhile to just think about that together, before we get to the actual list.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. That's really a question for you Nate.
Yeah, I mean, I think even say, for instance, the sign bylaw, I think it's fine if the committee was to work on it, you know, maybe that, you know, their resources through, you know, listservs, or just doing, you know, searches online or contacting places, and that's something the subcommittee could do, I mean, I'd end up doing something similar, so even like if we like the idea of cottage-style development, or say, something like that, I would, I think the subcommittee could say, okay, we'll work on it, and we'll, you know, try to find relevant case studies, we can contact the communities, see you know, how they're permitted, what the zoning say about it, and then, you know, staff can help consolidate and synthesize information and work on things, but some of that research can be done by members of the subcommittee, and you know, I've, you know, yeah, I mean, I feel like it's, I mean, you know, we sometimes we say there's technical fixes, say, for instance, like allowing multiple principal dwellings on a property. If, there's, you know, one section of the bylaw that talks about it, and, you know, we could come up with some language to change that, I mean, if it's, we think it's that simple, and then bring it here and discuss it. You know, like a tiered approach to apartments, to me, for instance, I could have ideas, or, you know, same thing, members could, someone could volunteer to take the lead on it, or look at other communities, or you know, to see how that works, you know, because, you know, I, for instance, that's, I, you know, I guess, yeah, the workflow, it's a good question, Angus, I think sometimes in the past, what had happened is the subcommittee would come up with ideas, and staff would do a lot of work, which is okay. But then, you know, sometimes it might just take longer if it's all on staff, and so I don't mind sharing, sharing work with everyone here.
Yeah. Bruce?
I was just thinking, when Nate said, maybe look back and see what previous years, lists looked like, previous decades, lists looked like, and you said, well, don't look back too far, and then I immediately looked back. And I was thinking that broadly speaking, I know, when Fred and I were on the planning board last, and we were both fairly considered, I mean, Fred joined shortly after I left, shortly after I joined, and so for the bulk of my seven years, and it was one year longer than the six usually, because of the Barkowski property and so forth, and that I was so deeply involved in that they, they stayed on for another year. But those seven years in the, from the mid 90s, the, the dominant concern, I think I recall, Fred, that the dominant concern of the town, just as housing is now the dominant concern, the dominant concern of the, of 25 years ago was, or 30 years ago, was basically enabling, well, it was the professional research parks, in other words, identifying what opportunities we had to zone for kind of high tax yield commercial uses and so forth. And the thought was that we could create opportunities for initiatives that was born in UMass Research to locate themselves in town. And the, and that thought, I think if I recall correctly, grew out of a concern that in the decade or 15 years prior to that, through the 80s, the dominant concern in town was preserving open space, and that we had a very active conservation director at that time, Pete Westover, and, and we put quite a lot of land into conservation, and I think that concern yielded the Farm Land Protection overlay by law, which grew out of that, and then the realization that we had so much land in town that was not developable, we had so little zone, so little opportunities to develop the business professional research parks, that because of all of the open space and what was dedicated to colleges and so forth, and floodplains and so forth, that then we put our efforts into trying to identify these professional research park locations and put those. And then, you know, I don't know what the dominant concerns for the, the aughts and, and so forth were, but it's now moved to housing, so you can kind of track the, 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 the big picture priorities of the planning initiatives in town over the past 40 years, somewhat along those three lines, and that's just my spontaneous recollection of having lived here for that period of time, and having been associated with the planning board on, on previous occasion. So we might want to reflect at that level, and to see, and make sure there isn't some large Large, um, issue that's waiting to be, uh, acknowledged, um. Ready to stare us in the face, but perhaps not quite yet appearing over the horizon. I don't know what that would be, but I haven't been looking or thinking about it either.
Thanks, Bruce, uh, Fred, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I agree with Bruce and, um. I wanted to add one thing, um. The business about conservation and at the, the, I think at the planning board meeting, there was. Some discussion around maybe easing off on some of the, uh, conservation. Protection on, uh, some of the lands that didn't particularly look like. What you normally think of as subject for conservation. And what I did not hear at that meeting and I think needs to be considered. And I, I, in terms of technical merit, I agree with Bruce. But there's a, there's a problem and it's a large problem and that is, um. Once something goes into conservation and Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure of this. Once something goes into conservation to take anything out of conservation. Requires not only the approval of the town, but also. A two-thirds vote in both houses of the state legislature. This is governed by a specific amendment to the state constitution. So this is a really big deal, uh, it, it has happened. Uh, as I recall, the, uh. Older house on the east side of Northeast Street. Out near the farm stand, um. There was some conservation land that connected to that, that I think managed to make it out of conservation. That's the only example I can think of, it is a really difficult process to undergo. So I, I wanted to just make sure people were aware of that.
Thanks, go ahead, Bruce.
Fred, I know what you say is true of, uh, agricultural preservation restrictions placed on land. I don't know whether that's true of land that's. Got conservation restrictions that are created, uh, by the town, for example, the. The twenty acres behind me, which is the tail of the Barkowski. Uh, product, which is basically, uh. Uh, the, the likely residue of any, any, uh. Any property that's developed under the farmland protection overlay, I don't know whether it's true of the land that's held by. Uh, Kestrel along East Pleasant Street that I was talking about the other night. But I know it's true of the APR lands.
Well, Nate, you, you may have a better technical grasp on this than I do, but. I, I kind of recalled it in reverse, so.
No, yeah, I think that, you know, in the last few years, the town's, you know, been a little more strategic with its open space acquisitions. And conservation restrictions, but no, it is, it's a pretty high bar. You know, even for town conservation land, especially for APR and other, you know, lands that are protected and so. You know, I think that especially say if we're looking at East Amherst, you know, there's some properties that. Have a fair amount of land behind, so you know, the, there's frontage and then there's farmland behind. You know, and we've talked, uh, you know, in the past few years about, you know, if, if that were to be, say, if these properties were under consideration. Per conservation, like, could you carve off so much of the front to allow it to be developed or to have some, some opportunity there as opposed to. You know, having, you know, this conservation program take the whole property and so. You know, I think that is important, especially as we get, you know, um. You know, there's fewer and fewer places to develop and so. Um, you know, even up in North Amherst, there's, you know, a lot of the properties are pretty big and have open space, and so if you're talking about conserving them. Is their ability to. Keep the frontage available, and I think that's actually what the farmland, um. You know, overlay does a bit, uh, setback from the street. Um, you know, I, I think to that point, you know, and I have the master plan map in front of me. On the wall and, you know, I think the town has identified village centers for a long time in downtown to develop with density and different things. I guess sometimes what I see is that the zoning or the policies or development hasn't necessarily. Provided opportunities in the way that the plan might show, um. So, you know, if we say, oh, East Amherst is this big and we'd like to see more infill. You know, the zoning along in East Amherst, like along College Street and in certain areas hasn't changed in a long time. Could be set for other areas and so. I, I agree, Bruce, I think with your general trends and I think, you know, some of it is right now is, um. You know, the housing piece is important and so some of it would be, I, I, to me, it's like, well, let's get people in town and then also at the same time figure out, you know, we're. Keep the zoning in place and have the opportunities to have different business developments or other things, I think. You know, uh, the R and D overlay has been in place for over ten years, maybe. Yeah, ten years, it hasn't been used, it's still in place, you know, maybe looking at the uses that are allowed in there needs to change, so for instance, you can have. You know, like three D manufacturing, right, or three D printing or Makerspace or things that. We might consider or in our bylaw might be under a classification that isn't allowed because typically it may have been like a, you know. Industrial use and now it's like a cleaner manufacturing and so sometimes I think. Even what we allow in mixed use buildings could be updated as, you know, non-residential, so, you know, you could have. You know, Fab Lab, for instance, right, or some innovative workspace in a mixed use building, it's not gonna create, it may, you know, I don't think it'll create the noxious. Impacts or, you know, but, you know, side effects that maybe we thought. Twenty or thirty years ago, and so even like those little changes could be really important. You know, I think housing is economic development and growth and so I think it's kind of doing both. You know, one of our priorities was looking at housing in the PRP possibly. Not, not changing what's allowed there, but maybe it is also then looking at, well, what other uses could we allow in the professional research parks, you know, if. You know, if medical offices aren't coming here, um, is there a way to incentivize it or, you know, could we get smaller? Uh, workspaces or, you know, shared workspaces or something. And so I don't, you know, I'd have to look and see how, what we have, what we have in our zoning, is it just the way? Our use classifications work isn't clear for people and they just don't know how to take advantage of it.
Yeah, all good thoughts, um, Janet.
Hi, I. You know, as soon as we're talking about like conservation land and, you know, space for more development, you know, my, all I can think of is sprawl. And so we have a master plan. To concentrate development in village centers and along, you know, like University Drive places, we don't need to take up any more conservation or APR land. To build housing, um. And then ironically, a lot of our PRP or research parks or have apartment houses in them, which is one of the great. Conundums of my life that we constantly have a zoning and we constantly kind of go around it, but I, I, you know, if I had to vote for where. Everyone should focus and I know I'm on the, on the cheap seats right here. Doing village center planning and zoning and so. I don't think people care so much about what's in a building as long as it's not, you know, like. The next, um, Ikea, bringing in tremendous traffic. What the uses are, they really care about how it looks and, you know, in East Amherst, like. I, you know, I've heard Chris Brestrop saying, you know, like, how can anyone explain our zoning? And basically it looked like, you know, thirty or forty years ago, people looked at what was on the ground. And said, okay, and, you know, here's a commercial building on College Street and so we're gonna call that COM. And then over here, we have a building that also has some apartment units in it and so we're gonna call this something else and so it's a really tiny area. That has like five different zoning things and it's almost impossible for people to do anything in it. Um, and we all want it to have something to do it, also, it's an area that's surround, not surrounded, but. There's a whole section of really active farms there that weren't active five years ago. And I don't wanna lose that farmland to another housing development, we don't need it. Um, there's other places to build and we should need to protect our resource lands, because we're gonna need them a lot in the years to come. And so I would just say, start a comprehensive planning process, saying, we want this, you know, one village center or we want village centers. To look like this, at this kind of height, flexible about the uses in it. And then the village center stops, you know, it doesn't just sprawl out into neighborhoods or farmlands or conservation lands or. Onto the Fort River, um, we have a nice community farm going on. Um, in, in, you know, East Amherst, so protect your resource lands. You know, which includes farmland and then just intensively do a planning process for, you know, you could do East Amher- East Amherst where I live. You know, fix the zoning, but also fix the look, people are gonna care, they don't wanna see probably six-story buildings. Um, they probably don't wanna see a ton of parking lots, but they also need a place to park or, you know, whatever, so I, I just think that. Since I've moved to Amherst, it's like we, we've avoided that hard process of doing zoning that involves the community. Probably outside consultants, otherwise we're gonna kill Nate. And just get it done, you know, and do one example and saying, hey, this looked really good, all the buildings that came in, they were taller, but they looked great. You know, different businesses or apartment buildings or, you know, whatever could be built. Um, or mixed use buildings that actually have commercial development on the first floor instead of empty spaces, which is what we see now. You know, let's just do the work and I, I think if you got that done, you know, miracle, you know.
Thanks, Janet, um, I, I think I, I like that idea a lot and I probably, I would guess East Amherst is the right place to start. With that approach. I thought I've thought about it a whole lot, yeah, I think that, that's really good, good thoughts. Okay, let's circle back unless there's more general this process discussion to. Maybe the list, Nate, that you have, uh, I would say one comment, I mean, I'm gonna have to go as soon as Bruce, Bruce gets back, I'm gonna have to go unfortunately. I very much like the idea of trying to think broadly, are there some. Across the board zoning changes we could make, that might facilitate some of what we're trying to accomplish. Yeah, and I'll, I'm gonna try and spend some time looking at our bylaws to, to make some sense of it. So I'll confess, I don't spend a lot of time reading our bylaws.
I don't anymore.
It's, it's really very important. Okay, Nate, you wanna share?
Yeah, and I was also gonna say, um. You know, I, Dodson is, uh, coming along with their downtown design standards and, um, they're trying to get a, a working group meeting going, uh, to. Uh, discuss the draft standards, they did a, a little bit ago, but. You know, I'm hopeful that from that process, what we will have things that we can then, you know, apply in different areas of town, right, so to Janet's point. You know, I think that. If we said, okay, let's simplify zoning in East Amherst or. Uh, whatever we wanna do there, I feel like we could take some of the things that Dodson has come up with, whether it's setbacks or kind of roof design. What, whatever it may be and, and have those work there, uh, and so right now we haven't. You know, right, zoning typically gives you kind of your max build out, your building envelope and set some parameters, we don't have. Uh, but you know, it hasn't looked at this, the, the specifics of each place, right, so. I think sometimes what we've, in the downtown, for instance, I feel like we, we don't have the flexibility to, to push a building back a little bit to have a wide sidewalk. In certain places and I feel like, you know, that's something I'd like to make sure we have when we start planning for density in other places, right, like to have. To me, a four-story building in a five-foot sidewalk, you know, so it's like. Five feet from building to curb, street curb is just not, not enough space, if we say we wanna have active streetscapes and so. You know, right now, I couldn't say that the zoning, say, even provides for that kind of flexibility in the village centers, um. And if we wanna have defined first floors, commercial space, we don't have great standards in terms of what are those outlook like, whether it's like, you know. Uh, window patterns or glass to whatever ratios and, you know, banding above it or sign fronts or whatever. So Dodson's kind of looking at all that for the downtown, but I think I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, they'll have things we can apply elsewhere. And so I can share my, um, my screen, it is interesting. You know, if we are talking about geographic areas and maybe some of the things on the list apply there, maybe we, you know, I think maybe it's like both, right, we have looked at geographically and then we. Use this list to. Um, maybe provide some ideas or priorities for staff to do.
Bruce, you were not here when I said that I need to go about now, uh, you'll have to take over as. Chair for the rest of today.
Okay, where am I? Just a minute, something's gone wrong, I've lost.
We can see it still.
Yes, I, I, I've got something on and covering my screen, which I have to get rid of, which popped in and I don't even. Oh, oh, I know what it is, it's you, you're sharing the screen, that's why I can't get rid of it.
Nate, can you make Bruce co-host? I don't think I can do that for some reason.
Do I need to be co-host in order?
No, but if I leave, just as long as it doesn't cancel the meeting when I leave.
No, I'm still, I'm still part of the co-hosting, so I can be.
I'm gonna go everyone, I will, I will watch the recording so I can make the minutes and stuff, uh, see you all soon, thanks, bye.
Okay. And so, uh, because I had to take the dog out, the, the, I'm by myself and the dog appeared in a, in a. In a manner that indicated that it needed to go outside, so that's where I went, so. I'm, uh, apart from recognizing, uh. Who should speak, I don't know what I'm doing, we're looking at the list, um, it's got, uh, now fifteen, as far as I can see. Seventeen. Are, are we, uh, asking ourselves, uh, how we would prioritize this? Or comment in a way that might con, conjoin certain items, um, I guess the question is, what do people want to say about this list? Is that, is that, is that appropriate, is that, am I doing my job properly here?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think we can add to it, we could start highlighting things if we thought staff could look at them. You know, for instance, this is kind of apropos, um. You know, the limited site planner view or administrative approval for protected uses, um, on the mass planners list, or someone just asked that this week or last week. You know, and so, um. You know, that's something that staff could look into, like I mentioned, you know, the planning board had a number of hearings in the last year or two. For these uses, right, whether it's, you know. Certain educational or nonprofit, uh, and the idea would be to have, you know. Uh, some limited, you know, some criteria that if it met that, it could be handled administratively, if it was a bigger project, it would go to a full hearing with the planning board. And I think a number of communities now are taking that approach and so, you know, is that, you know. If, for instance, like the planning board looked at, you know, the conversion of a home down in South Amherst to a group home. And, you know, the planning board spent a fair amount of time talking about, um, the fencing and the parking. You know, we can't say no to these uses, we can put reasonable conditions on them. And, uh, so, you know, to me, I would, we can look at the previous decisions we've had. And come up with what we think are good conditions and criteria that have, that are in the bylaw that the projects have to meet. And then, you know, if they can't meet it, then it goes to a hearing, um, or if it's, you know, a, a big enough project. Um, I think this is also coming about because the Attorney General, when they've been reviewing accessory dwelling unit. Town meeting articles, they said, you know, there's a limited ability through site planner view or, or through zoning to, to condition or deny protected uses. And I think they've read other towns bylaws. And they've said, you know, even though they weren't changing, they've had cautionary comments like, oh, it looks like. Here you are, you know. You have these other standards that aren't changing that you're gonna apply to ADUs, you have to be really careful if you do that, because it can't be used to deny the ADU, it can be used to maybe. Put reasonable conditions on it, and so I think communities are becoming more aware of. You know, how they have to handle protected uses.
Well, I've got a thought about how we might ask ourselves how we could organize this list, but, uh. Before we do that, let's take Angus and then, uh, Fred, Angus.
Well, I'd be curious to hear your, hear your thoughts, Bruce, I, I was gonna mention. Three things, but I, I think the planning department could, could tackle without too heavy a lift and that's number four. Mo- multiple principal dwellings on a property, since you mentioned that earlier, Nate. Number seven, the one you were just outlining, and the number fourteen. Which I think are all pretty, pretty light lifts, um, and not, not terribly. Uh, I mean, number four might be controversial, but, but not, not in terms of just, not in terms of the, the proposal to changing the wording. And then I. I was gonna suggest, I, I'm very interested in number twelve. And that's something that, that I could work on between now and the next subcommittee meeting for us to maybe. Think about, looking at how other communities have defined, um. PRPs, if they allow housing in them. Um, but, but anyway, I, I'd love to hear your thoughts, Bruce, before I keep going.
Well, Fred, before I recognize you, I'll just say that, uh, my suggestion, uh, was very much along Angus's lines. It seems to me that we could take these seventeen items and put them into, uh, two or three categories. And one of those categories would be, uh, uh, items that are essentially, uh. Staff, uh, initiate, staff initiated or executed, in other words, things that are quite technical. That, uh, and maybe ra- rather, rather. Rather precise or rather mechanical, I don't know what the right word is, but I think we know what I'm saying. And then there are, then, then there's the rest of the list and I think probably then within the rest of the list, there are things. And then there are, then, then there's the rest of the list. And I think probably then within the rest of the list, there are things that might be. Broad expansive issues and things that might be more surgical interventions in the bylaw. And so I think we could probably divide the list. Further divide the list into those two. And that would, that would give uh. A, a list of seventeen would be organized into three separate categories. But there might be other cat, it might be another way of categorizing. But I think one of the products of this meeting could be. That we uh, leave this meeting uh, having achieved that uh, uh, having, having so categorized the list. I think that might be, that might, will make it uh, easier to digest and uh, and think about. Fred.
Uh, yeah, I, um. What used to be on this list, and for some reason it doesn't seem to be on it now, and I think it should be, and that is. And it's in the category of something that is kind of a no-brainer. And there are examples, uh. Hilda has given me some examples and other bylaws that have addressed this. And that is to correct the definition of owner occupancy. Which is a crucial factor in the uh, in a number of things in the bylaw. And the definition. It needs to be modernized because so much uh, of. Owner occupied locations now, uh, technically, the owner who resides there is technically not the owner. Under the wording of the bylaw because the ownership is passed into a Medicaid avoidance trust.
So Fred, is that what you're seeing somehow different from number ten?
Oh. Sorry, Bruce, I, that's, yeah, that should go into. You know, somehow I read through the list and I completely missed it. That's on me. But yeah, that, that's something that the staff, I think can, can uh, fix. Come up with language that fixes fairly easily.
Okay, uh, oh, in that case, um. Uh, Nate, i- is this uh, document that you can reorganize? Uh, I mean, I guess you could do it the way you're doing it with colors for the moment, but I think that we should come up with headings. That describe the three categories. And then I think that could be a product of the meeting that uh. Um, Jesse reports to the next board, which we've taken this list and we've discussed it, we've uh, and we've. Categorized it.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, we can do that. I'm just, I'm highlighting as we're speaking just to. You know, but yeah, I, I feel like I would um, have, have them grouped, uh, say for the planning board meeting and. Have the board discuss it.
I would think, uh, let's see, uh, I'm looking for a big picture one here, um, change, uh, maybe change zoning in village center.
Yeah.
So maybe so, now grab another color. Uh, we can discuss whether this is proper or not, but I just want to put the third color out there for the moment, uh, so that we can uh. Define, uh, agree or refiner. That's too dark. Yeah, there you go. So, um, so then the question is, what's the difference between uh, the green and the gray?
Yeah, to me, the gray was what say the uh, members of the, of the subcommittee would work on maybe more immediately and maybe the. I don't know if that, however, that looks like blue to people, that's maybe a more long-term or um, you know, things that might take a little bit, you know, more research to, to get forward. I, I don't.
Yes, so is Angus, does that work for you? That, that I think certainly the, the yellow uh, and uh. Whatever the, Nate, if you could come up with a title that describes the yellow uh, categories. And then I agree, or it seems to me, Angus, are you comfortable with the idea that gray is? Um, uh, activities that uh, that the, the subcommittee will tackle more immediately. And that the green are the, the, the ones that will be deferred. Either because they're less immediately interesting or because they're, they're bigger. Oh, just a minute, I'll have to tell Mr. Pipeline that I, no, I, I can't do it.
Yeah, that, that, that sounds good to me. Um, you could even put, um, Nate, you could put my name in parentheses after twelve. That, that I'll work on that and bring something to the subcommittee to, to get us going next, next time.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, that makes, that makes total sense to me.
The, the forty Y overlay looks like it's another green one and um, is that uh? This, that looks like a heavy lift and certainly something that the committee, subcommittee would want to be involved in. Do we agree? What about cottage style apartments? Uh, cottage style development, is that part of a forty Y or, I mean, uh? We might want to, we might want to put some uh, uh, make these long sentences or short paragraphs. You know, cottage style development, colon, and then a sentence, an explicatory sentence.
Yeah, to me, creating a four, a forty Y, it could be, I, I, the way I think of cottage style development is, you know, essentially. Multiple units on a property, whether it's on small lots or condominiumized, but you know, for instance, right now. Because we don't allow multiple principal dwellings on a property. And the way we have our definitions, so to me cottage style would be a development method in our bylaw. Kind of like a, you know, OSCD or something.
Okay, so it's definitely a green.
And then if we, um. I mean, for instance, that's what I was thinking. And then if we liked the way it's written, then you know, could you allow it, say then by site plan review in these districts or special permit in these? You know, I don't, I, you know, the housing production plan mentioned it. I haven't, you know. Looked at it closely enough to say, okay, how, well, how does it work? Um, or what, you know, but.
I think I mentioned last time that uh, the review of the OSC uh, development method and make sure that it's uh, just look at it. That probably could be folded into that cottage style development uh, in conjunction with a review of the OSC. Development method.
I want to make that a gray, so that's something the subcommittee. Can uh.
Well, if uh.
Could, could be that it's.
Well, let's wait until we know we've got somebody who, uh, uh, a commitment on the committee's part to. Take that on, because it is a big, uh, well, it's a, it's a broad. It's a broad review. It's, it's not a, it, we're not tinkering. That I guess the essence is that these green things are non-tinkering interventions or initiatives.
Right. And I, I will say that, um, I see other hands up that, you know. You know, we've often tried to bring like maybe one, sometimes two zoning amendments forward. It could be that. Depending how these align, maybe we would, you know, in the spring, we would say, okay, well, let's try to bring. Three or four zoning amendments forward to the, to council, um, knowing that. You know, it takes time. So if we, you know, if we had. Right, I, I, and maybe that's something we can talk about uh, here. And then with the planning board is like, okay, let's set up a schedule for this. Uh, to give some deadlines and things to move forward because, you know, we could, you know, I think the. We could take, right, I think we could take three of these and really work on them over the next six months and then have something that is, we think is ready.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So the gray are the things that we're uh, working on. Um, I think I've got Angus. Uh, Fred, I'm assuming that's not a legacy hand and, and then Janet. Uh, so Angus.
Yeah, I could, I could, um, not for, for the next uh, subcommittee meeting, but for later ones, I could take number seven, the tiered approach to apartments. And see, um, maybe research some other communities and how they define um, tiered approaches. And, and I think that's a pretty big change. Um, I think it's, it's maybe worthwhile, but um, but I could at least. So I, I wouldn't want to like come up with a proposal, but maybe bring to the subcommittee some different um, options to see how other communities are doing it.
Okay, well, all four, the, all three of those grays uh, so far are housing related, so that's, there's a cons. I guess we might say a healthy consistency there. Fred.
Yeah, uh, a question, Nate, on the cottage style, um. I'm thinking of the uh, development that's now underway uh, on the Montague Road. And uh, uh, I'm. There is gonna be, it went to the planning board for review. And it's, it's very positive and there's a, a bunch of uh, uh. Duplexes and so forth that, that provide uh, ownership, uh, dispersed ownership. Uh, would that? Uh, be an example of what you're talking, if, if that whole parcel were. Uh, populated that way, would that be an example of the cottage style development that you're thinking of?
Um, I'm not, I don't, I actually, no, not necessarily.
Really, uh.
It, it, it's funny, I'll, I was gonna pull up a, um. I'll share my screen in a second when I find it.
While you're looking Nate, I'm, I'm, that was done, as we know, as a friendly forty B. And uh, so that means that it doesn't fit into any of our existing available development methods. Um, and uh, um, uh. And I guess it's, it's, it's like a. A clustered subdivision.
Yeah, I mean, I guess when I think of cottage, when I think of cottage style, here's, um. If, if my screen's visible, um.
It is.
So you know, this is in a West Concord, but you know, this was one big property. At one point with a, a big home up front, and then they made all these smaller individual, you know, single family home opportunities. You know, so what, you know, and then they did it next door. And so it's not, you know, it's not, to me, it's not like a subdivision necessarily. It could be on either a bigger lot, but you know, there's some. Some design standards and some, you know, you can even have some uh, you know, limitations on the size of the structures. There's some common areas, maybe central parking, but. To me, it's more of, of this style. Um, so it's almost like allowing multiple ADUs on a property. Uh, with a little more, maybe some standards and conditions there. But I, you know, if someone has a different idea of what, of how they want to interpret that, that's um. That's fine. That's kind of what I was envisioning with the cottage style piece.
Um, I have to go, but thank you for having me as a participant.
Thank you, Janet.
Alright, bye-bye.
Anytime and every time.
Thanks.
Angus?
Yeah, I was just gonna add that the uh, the draft housing production plan is a nice description of the cottage style development on page one twenty-three. Um, and the, the key advantage there is that it, instead of each.
Bring that up quickly Nate?
The housing production plan?
One twenty, page one twenty-three.
Uh, give me a second.
While Nate's.
Sorry, I was trying, I tried to see if there was a chat to drop in a link, but I, I don't think we allowed chat.
No, we don't enable it unfortunately.
Yeah, makes sense, but the advantage, um, I mean, there's numerous advantages, but instead of each, each individual property. Having to have a yard or parking, you can actually move those more communally. Um, so it's, it's a way of working with space differently than I guess single family lots would normally allow.
Yes, Ross Chapin, the west coast architect in Seattle, has a very, very clever, sensitive, thoughtful. And uh, intelligent man has uh, uh, made the, made. Made this look very attractive and respectable. Um, I, I know that in Melbourne, in my city, it's uh. You've basically got a lot where there may have been one house. This happens a lot in Melbourne. Um, where the house will be torn down and the, uh, instead of having one house with a driveway down one side. It, it's developed more like this with a central access, and it may not be a driveway. In the case of Chapin, that central courtyard has got flowers and uh, and all sorts of attractive landscaping happening in it. But uh, that's more the scale that I uh, see as the cottage style.
Right.
Developments, and that's, that's really, it's kind of redevelopment more than development in a sense.
Yeah, I mean, Fred, I think the uh, development on ball lane almost could have been OSCD. Uh, but there is that, um. The, because of certain conditions in the bylaw on having uh, say each, each unit be on their own lot, it got a little tricky. Uh, and then they needed some flexibility with some parking, other things. So it was a, you know, comprehensive permit, but it, it could have almost been designed as. You know, almost like a, like a, basically like a cluster subdivision, um, is what it is similar to.
It's the experience, Nate, of that ball lane development that caused me to ask my question about why did that have to be a. A forty B and not an OSCD. Uh, can we, could we look at that and, and basically redesign? Or redraft the OSCD so that could happen within that? That would seem to be a useful exercise, actually.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
As, as a, as a, as a method of, of examining the OSCD. Just take the ball lane car and say, why can't the. Why can't it work as an OSCD? What would have to change? Do we want to make those kind of changes to enable something like that that we already know we want and we already know? That what we thought was a mechanism that was supposed to get it. And wasn't, it was too heavy a lift for it. Let's, let's strengthen that particular fraction of the bylaw.
Thank you, Bruce. That was the point of my question. I, I've forgotten the ball lane identifier, but yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I just made notes on the list about that. I think it's a, it's a good exercise.
It's twelve thirty, it's after twelve thirty, we've, you all have been at it for. An hour and forty minutes. I apologize for being a little late. Um, is there anything else we wanted to get to? I mean, we certainly do, first of all, do we think we've? Uh, I think if we've got time, can we take another ten minutes and, and go back to that list and just look quickly at it again and, and satisfy ourselves that? We can ask Nate and satisfy Nate that he feels duly empowered to reconstitute this list into three categories and that he can give them. Three names.
Yeah, and you know, I can go down the list so far. Um, you know, even the first one is identify areas for new development. You know, we started at the planning board and maybe that's something that, um, you know, the housing and zoning subcommittee continues, and it's not saying.
That's probably a gray one, I think.
Yeah, like what happens there yet? It's just, you know, kind of set, setting up a, kind of a long range. Plan for, okay, here are the areas we could. We could.
Yeah, let's go quick. So I, I'm gonna suggest that that's gray, and if anybody objects, please say so. And I'm thinking the next two are, are yellow.
Uh, why am I stuck there?
And, and uh, the uh, SPR, the senior housing is probably a green.
Yes, senior housing's, you know, it's, it's, you know, something I think, Angus, I see your hand. You know, we, we don't actually have a specific senior housing category, and other communities have been doing it.
So Nate, when you, when you're making your list, could you do as you've done with the uh, number six? And uh, uh, put a colon or a dash and then a following uh, sentence that. Uh, basically describes what we, what, what the task is. Uh, Angus?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm. I guess I'm, I'm seeing number one as maybe similar to. Num- the very end. Um, those seem like they could be connected. Um, I mean, especially evaluate for density on main corridors. I think that's exactly what Janet was talking about. Um, so I wonder if that could just be moved up. And to me, that's actually a pretty. Those three subcategories are pretty big. Um, so I wonder if this is more, if that's more of a blue.
I'm, uh, I'm good with that. Fred, are you okay?
I, I think, if I, if I, if I could just quickly, I think the idea is that the housing and zoning subcommittee and planning board could try to identify the areas. It's like we already did, we, you know, at the last planning board meeting, we identified thirteen areas. And maybe the idea would be to say, okay, here are the three priorities. And then we move on to two, which is the more in-depth piece, but then we know where we're focusing, so. Um, you know, is it East Amherst where we're focusing? Is it, you know, Pomeroy? Is it north of Fearing? And then, you know, we can, then we can take the deeper dive into, okay, what does it actually mean to change zoning in these areas?
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, that's, that's great. Um, number thirteen, uh, is this a yellow one?
Yeah, so I think at the last meeting Jesse mentioned, you know, the planning board spends a fair amount of time. Reviewing things that, you know, I don't want to say they're inconsequential, but could they be handled with this uh, set of standard conditions? And I, I agree, uh, I think, you know, we've tried to standardize our, our product review. And so, you know, Bruce, you've asked to, right, in more recent projects, only. Change the font or something, right? Italize conditions that aren't our standard, right? We have like kind of a fifty, fifty set of standard conditions. Um, they're not part of the bylaw necessarily. And so Jesse was kind of saying, well, is there a way to build it in? So, you know, an applicant comes in and knows that. You know, lighting needs to be downcast and certain things, you know, we typically require. Um, so I, you know, to me, that's something. Um, I don't know if it's yellow, maybe it's gray. It's something I feel like someone could review conditions, the bylaw and come up with. you know, a proposal in terms of how to standardize it a bit more. I'm not exactly sure how it all works, but.
Well, I don't think it's at harm in having a fourth category, which is just ones at the left, right, which is simply, we haven't agreed or had sufficient deliberation to know into which category they go. So it's not as though they're going to be a new category. It's just that we're not sure which of the existing three. So leave those, leave that one white for the moment. And, uh, number four, 15, and that's probably yellow, is it? I think you said, yes.
15?
Uh, uh, it's helping to see hands. No, okay. Um,
Or it could be gray. I mean, if someone wanted to pick up the mixed use building thing and just, you know, research, okay, how do other communities define mixed use buildings?
Make it gray for the time being and, and we'll say, we can, I mean, this is provisional. This is because this is what we're going to show our colleagues and and we, we'll have a discussion about it and, um, we'll learn a lot. This, the point of this is that it's provoking a, an organized engagement from our uh, colleagues on the board. And number 18?
Maybe we leave it white for now.
Yes, okay. Um, so, um, that's, I think Nate, you've, you've got a, you can produce a product that Jesse can bring. Back Angus?
Could I just, could I just ask one clarifying question, which is about number 13? The, are, when, when we say SPR conditions, are these the standards and conditions listed in the table in the zoning bylaws? Or is there a separate conditions thing in the, in the zoning bylaws?
Well, in section 11.2, we have our criteria we look, we go through when we make findings for site plan review and uh, and then we have some conditions embedded in table three and other places. And
Yeah.
I, I guess, you know, to me, my, the way Jesse was asking is could we, I'm not sure exactly where, but somewhere in the bylaw, kind of say, okay, well, you know, here is, here are the standards thing, you know, it, someone would be looking at, say, the last two years of projects. And what are our standard set of conditions we always write in? And then do we, can we codify that somehow? I've been, I'm not sure where to put it yet. I kind of want to see where it is.
Well, I think Nate, you mean that we typically have, uh, 40 or 50 conditions, uh, particularly in, in the construction phase and, and so forth, which are extremely perfunctory and, uh, and, and essentially boilerplate and they're the same. And, and it, it is painful to read them all the time. Um, but it could be argued that it's not that painful and, and we occasionally uh, are, are, are triggered to make a uh, change or an addition because it gets us thinking about things. So I think it's a something that we need to think about. But, uh, golly, Fred and I remember the days when the conditions were generated on the fly by the board uh, during the hearing. And we didn't have the benefit of staff producing, uh, you know, draft conditions which ran to three or four pages for us to read. But essentially, I think Jesse's talking about these draft conditions, which we review and amend as necessary and then vote into the decision. And you're wondering whether we could have something that was, uh, um, statutory as opposed to what you might call, um, uh, uh, case law. Angus?
Well, I, I remember when I met with, um, you, Nate and, and Rob and Pam about kind of, you know, orienting me to the planning board. Y'all, y'all, as I recall, Rob was saying that, that he, that the conditions are really helpful for him. That, that he goes into great detail with them because it's, it is the document that they've agreed to. So as part of this also, that, that there's a lot of conditions that the planning board itself isn't necessarily needing to vote on, but, but they're being included as part of the conditions that we are kind of, you know, looking over because the, it's easier for the building commissioner to kind of have something in a document. Am I placing that correctly?
Yeah, yeah. And I was just looking at my notes I have here. I think also Jesse was kind of saying that if, you know, for instance, we have, you know, a, a bunch of kind of, I don't want to say they're performance standards, but ideas that certain things have to be met for the conditions. Can staff ensure that the project meets those? So when it gets to the planning board, you don't, we don't have to spend time talking about, you know, say like the landscape, um, say the, um, parking island designs, you know, or the screening for utilities. And I, I, you know, I think the difficulty is that we often mention all these to applicants and they think they've done that. They think they've accomplished it, but then it gets to the board and the board is like, actually, maybe not, right? And so I, I think it's really hard to say, well, Ken, if we, to me, this would go on like somewhere in 11.2. If we think this is something, maybe there are like a dozen um, conditions that we say have to be met. Um, you know, I, I, you know, I'm not sure, or, you know, like if, if they're met, it doesn't need a site plan review, but if they, if you can't meet it, then it does. I, you know, I'm not sure how we would work it in. I agree Angus is that what in the past we had in our decision, that's why we changed, I changed the format just recently. We used to have, um, essentially summaries of our meeting minutes. And we'd have a, you know, um, you know, a 15 page decision. And then really we'd have two pages of conditions, but legally it's the conditions that are enforceable and what we want to make sure capture everything. And so, you know, a few attorneys over the years have said, well, if it's important, make it a condition. Let's not have it be kind of like, oh, it's part of the, you know, the meeting summary or the minutes. That's not, that's not helpful. Um, and so we've tried to, you know, learn from that. And so, you know, that's why we have this now, right? This 40, 50, you know, even like a small project will have 50 conditions. It's not necessarily that the planning board thinks it's, we want to exhaust, you know, everything, but it's like also for the inspectors, for everyone who's involved in the project after, it's easy to follow.
I know we also have a situation with the fire department where we get conditions and then typically we handle that administratively. We say, we don't, we don't fold the the conditions of the fire department into our conditions. We simply ask the board and the applicant whether all of these have been satisfied or will be satisfied.
Right.
So there's a, there's a, there's a, I guess, an alternative model there. And I think Jesse might be thinking of, uh, why don't we handle uh, these conditions, the way we handle the conditions, essentially conditions um, given us by the fire department? Because we, we, you know, we've, uh, I guess it's me, I've on one or two occasions uh, said to the fire department, can you please not just give us a list of conditions? Can you, having reviewed the project, uh, tell us that these conditions have been satisfied? Um, and, and I suppose we've, we've dealt with that a little bit, but it, but it does mean that the fire department has reviewed it and they've given a bunch of conditions. And then we've said to ourselves, uh, we've said to, uh, the, the applicant, um, you send these 15 conditions from the fire chief, uh, uh, do you have a problem with meeting any of those? It allows us to ask that kind of a question. And for the, uh, for the, uh, uh, applicant to be on record as saying, uh, we will, they're all good, we will satisfy them all. That's possibly an argument for including the, the minutes. But they're, if they're not in the decision, they're at least on the record. Um, so I think that's the, uh, that's the kind of conversation that, that I think Jesse's proposing.
Yep. Yeah, I know the fire department writes pretty technical memos. Yeah, so that, you know, it's just like meets, you know, NFPA, whatever code number and, um, you know, I, I think it's, it's, right, I agree, Bruce, the planning board confirms. And I think it's what it also does is that it's for the applicant to then work with their development team and say, okay, here's what we have to, to do. And even if they haven't met it yet, they know that's what, what's coming.
Hmm.
Uh, so it's, you know, I, sometimes I've thought maybe we would talk to the fire department and say, okay, could you even just preface your BMO or include a statement or two like, okay, you know, the project, you know, right, is fine to move forward because, you know, it, right, it, it's meeting most of these or it seems like it can, I don't, you know, because I, it, it's hard to interpret every, uh, all the things the fire department writes.
But I'm sure Rob Mara looks at the same list from the fire chief as he does the stated conditions in the decision. And, and they're bulleted and, and all of those bullets are things he cares about.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to leave it white for the moment. Um, because it's, it's, it's in the reorganized menu. It's not going away. And we haven't asked ourselves whether there's anything else uh, that should be here, but I think that can probably be, uh, part of the conversation that the full board, uh, um, enjoys. And of course, anytime we can add to this list, we don't have to, this is not going to be definitive, I don't think. We can add to it. We, we have organized it and then we prioritize it. And I'm, they say priority is going to work along the lines that Angus just demonstrated. I will do number 14 is a very strong argument for putting it at the top of the priority of this.
I'm gonna have to go in a couple of minutes.
I think we're done. Um, uh, I have, I'm not looking at the agenda. Is there anything on the agenda that we haven't got to that we might just declare that we table?
Now, we had, you know, future, we had other agenda items. They're kind of just like general housing discussions. Um, I think we're, I think we covered what we need to, as time allows.
Okay, I'm good with that. Uh, are we, are we good? Are we done? Um, hearing no objections, uh, I think I can simply adjourn the meeting as the perfunctory chair. Thank you all.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you. Bye.